All right, 6:45, we will call the joint meeting on Tuesday, June 13th to order, and we will start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a quick announcement. Tonight is an auspicious night. We have a distinguished member who will be serving his last meeting, so we're not going to change things too much, but I just wanted to let people in the audience know that this meeting will definitely bleed into our city council meeting. We will not have opening ceremonies at our city council meeting because we'll have some closing ceremonies for this meeting. So, agenda item number one is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on May 9th, 2023. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And I'm going to ask that John Smith gets all of the motions, because there was a tie there. So we'll just give the tie to John Smith, and we'll give the second to Andrew Howe. There we go. Any comments, questions, any additions or changes on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? The motion carries. Number two is the consent calendar. It is letters A through L. Does anybody have anything they wish to withdraw from the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to L.
To withdraw L, then?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion then to approve the consent calendars, items A through H, I'm sorry, A through, hang on a second.
K.
A through, no, A through K, sorry, thank you. And we'll be good, because L's the last one.
Move approval. Sorry, you're too slow.
John will second that, right, John?
You're not retired yet.
I don't want to make, there might be something controversial on there.
You have never shied away from that before, John, so I heard John second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries. So, Jackie, though, I do have to give you this one. Go ahead and make a motion to bring L to the table now.
I make a motion to approve item 2L to make an additional appropriation of $1,500 within the general fund for the HIV task force.
All righty, a second. And Jackie, do you have a specific question on that? Why did you withdraw?
Yes, I mean, I realize this is not a whole lot of money, but as far as I know, we don't have an AIDS epidemic anymore, so I just wondered, what's the $1,500 for?
It's a great question, and I'm happy to answer this one. And one of the things I'm kind of happy that happened in the past, so not this budget year, but the budget year previous, when we were newly elected, there was a $1,500 annual grant that went to the HIV Mayor's Task Force on AIDS, and they used it for educational purposes. This year, they did not get that grant, so we removed that from the budget. However, they did get a grant from an outside institution, it was a pharma company, I don't remember who it was, I think it was Merck, that has come in, and they were able to pay for their educational expenses this year, so they really want to carry this over to next year, from what I understand on this. Am I missing anything? Any other ques, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you, Mayor.
Yep, so some good news there as well. And just for total clarity, there are no boards and commissions that get any funding from the city any longer, so if they do choose to go out and get grant funding to do special programs, things like that, like the Arts and Culture Commission or something, they're welcome to do that, but we hold everybody at the same level of accountability. So we have motion second, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number three is to make an additional appropriation of $45,000 within the Capital Projects School Fund for the Southside School HVAC project?
Move approval.
Of course, John has to approve that one, it's a school project. Any comments or questions from the audience, from the members, sorry? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number four, to transfer $2,254,270.62 of the uncollectible taxes and $1,481,017.79 for motor vehicles, $471,034.85 for supplemental motor vehicle, and $302,217.98 for personal property.
Move approval.
Second.
We're getting this down, I like it. Any comments, questions on this one?
To the chair.
Yes.
I'm guessing that this is not something new, that this is something that's done yearly?
Yeah.
Okay, so what percentage of that will be, typically will be recovered? Do we know?
I don't know if Ann is here to speak on it, but maybe we could have Diane. Go ahead, Diane, I know who has.
So, what I can tell you, yes, every year by statute, we do transfer uncollected taxes to the suspense list. It still remains collectible, they still do try to collect it, the collection agencies also get involved to collect it. As far as the exact percentage, I don't have that number, and we can get that to you, but all we're doing is we're removing it from, like, the active collected list and just making it, putting it in suspense, but it is still actively tried to be collected through the collection agency. So it's not a total write-off for the city.
Right, so, but it is going to the collection agency?
The majority of it is yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great. Other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five, to make transfers totaling $912,990 from the Equipment Building Sinking Fund contingency account for purchasing of capital outlay for various departments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I heard a second over here, who got it? Ron Burns gets a second. Any comments or questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Number six, we're up to Diane with our monthly revenue and expense report presentation.
So, good evening, everyone. So we're getting to the point where we're wrapping up the fiscal year. I, I'm not going to read everything verbatim, but I will let you know, we still are trending as we have been the last few months. Tax revenues will come in as expected, prior year tax, while not along the same lines as the prior year, we actually are over our budget estimates, which is good. Motor vehicles on track, our conveyance taxes and building permits have far exceeded our estimates. As you know, our investment earnings have done really well, we're actually 410% above budget through May. And our federal grants, as you know, we did receive a couple of unexpected ones this year. And I did put on here the police special services, as you know, we do bill for what the police, the contracted services, so we actually have collected 1.3 million in revenue, and we incurred 1.1 million in wages, so there's a surplus that's generated of around $200,000. I did note that, starting July 1 of next year, that money will be accounted for in a special revenue fund, all that activity, so that will not be in the general fund. So overall, just quickly adding these up, the revenues alone will be generating about a $5 million surplus over estimates. On the expenditure side, we are getting ready to close everything out, the departments are working on going through their encumbrances, looking at year-end expenditures. I have already had some requests for carryovers, which will be judiciously reviewed, I know we've cut back a lot on those over the last few years, so we will be reviewing those before they go to the Board of Finance. And I think that's it. I mean, commodities, I think, are trending better than we thought they would, and we do have some money set aside in a reserve account for that, as you know, we did that last year during the budget process, so I think overall, the budget will end very favorably. Other things that we're working on, we are working on the budget document, as you know, you did approve that last month, and we're hoping to have that completed and ready and up on the website by the end of July, so we're working with the departments to get all of that information together. Does anybody have any specific questions on anything?
Go ahead, Marie.
It's not on this report, Diane, but, and perhaps it's also directed to the mayor, but what do we know about how the Connecticut General Assembly favored Bristol in the recently approved state budget? Do we have firm numbers yet on?
There are firm numbers, I'm not prepared to give you exact firm numbers, but I know that education spending in particular, which is the largest pool of money that we have, was actually a little better than expected, and Bristol being one of those alliance districts will do very well, so there shouldn't be major fluctuations there, and if there are, they're to the positive. There were a couple of other packages and other things that happened for local projects, and Bristol Health is one of the most notable, where they actually are going to receive $7 million over a two-year period to help them right the ship. There are a couple other bonding issues that I have not caught up with yet, that were out there and we were asking for, and are, I do want to just applaud our state legislators, because they did a great job in working to make sure that Bristol was part of the conversation and involved in much of the funding that we got, so generally, good news. I actually missed today, today's a very busy day, we have lots of graduations, I actually missed the CCM overview, but we'll get it in the next week or two, and it is signed, sealed, and delivered, but nothing scary, which is good news.
They also finally did some.
Just in the microphone, I'm going to ask you 10 times tonight, probably, on your last night, but people need to hear what you have to say, John.
They finally did something with excess costs, so.
Yes.
Only took 10 years, but they finally did.
Yep, and they managed to do all that with the tax decrease, too, so we'll see how it all works out.
Through the chair. Marie, they have tomorrow night at the library at 6:30, a couple of the legislators will be there with a Q and A session for the end of the session, so for stuff like that. You're welcome.
Very good. Any other comments or questions for Diane? Okay, so, the, any other business, I'm not actually soliciting any other business, but Diane and I did talk with, oh. Well, so did we, a quick clarification, so this, $1,500 got on this agenda for, yeah, so we took care of that already. This is, oh, oh, but no, no, is this gonna, the police one, does that go to the Board of Finance, or, or any?
City Council.
City Council, okay, so we're doing City Council, good, all right. Thank you for the clarification, thank you for keeping me on track here. If there is no other business before us, I'd like to turn it over to Diane to start what we'll call a little ceremony that is very appropriate tonight for many, many years of service, so I'm going to give Diane the floor first.
So, I had a few remarks prepared, and as I was walking in, I were given, I was given some additional facts, which I thought were kind of interesting. I was told that June 13th, which is today, which is John's last day serving on the Board of Finance in the joint meeting, was the day that Bristol was incorporated. So I think there's a little bit of symbolism there, that, John, with all of your years of dedicated service, that obviously you haven't been involved since, for 238 years, but there is some symbolism there, so I thought that was an interesting fact. The other two facts that I thought were interesting is, I actually picked John up and chauffeured him here tonight, and as we were driving by Southside School, he had to tell me that this, it was the fourth project that he worked on back in 1974, so that was one of his first projects, and I think it's very appropriate that you are actually approving, you voted for, and made the motion to approve additional funding for Southside School tonight, so hopefully that project will be in good hands and done with all of your involvement. But, a couple things that I did want to say, I've been doing this for a very long time for a number of different communities throughout the state of Connecticut, for the last six years here in Bristol, where I've had the pleasure of working with John and getting to know him. Foremost, I admire his dedication, his long-term volunteerism, and his loyalty to this city. He always has, and I know he will continue, to always have the city's best interests at heart. He was always open and supportive to new ideas, change, helping the city, particularly the Controller's Office, working to implement efficiencies or just a better way to do things. Using his own words, "You were never the pickle in the pickle of progress." So those of you that know John, know that he has a lot of witty sayings that I'm going to tell you about right now. We were, back in 2020, John, we had a special presentation that we were going to do in 2020, for his 80th birthday at the April Board of Finance meeting. Unfortunately, COVID hit, and we were not able to have that meeting. So over that time, we have collected what we call Johnisms. So, I'll start. So John has always been very supportive and involved with the budget process. Whenever department heads or staff had new ideas, his comment was, "The only thing wrong with that idea is I didn't think of it." After long and intense budget meetings, he would walk out and he would say, "Where else can you have so much fun and not get paid for it?" John understood the magnitude of the city's budget and would always be proud to say, "This is a 350-plus-million-dollar operation." When we would get caught up on some minutia during the budget process, he would comment, "That's like throwing a basketball in the ocean," and he would always get us to focus on what the real issues were. John always put things in perspective when it was needed. I cried when I had no shoes until I met the person who had no feet. When you told me you were not planning to get reappointed and retire, I found that hard to believe. Now I hear you still want to stay involved with the CIP Committee, so what is it used to say? It is what it is until it isn't. I don't think that's retirement, John. Some of the other sayings of John's are, "Walk out backwards so people think you are leaving." The only stupid question is the one you don't ask. And John would always end every meeting with anything else for the good of the order. Every once in a while, John would be late to an early morning meeting, but we always knew he was delayed, and we always knew the reason why. He was always making breakfast for his grandchildren, so when he finally showed up, we were always interested in what was for breakfast, and it wasn't cereal and milk for John, it was always pancake and waffles, so those grandchildren ate very well. John, on behalf of me and my staff, we will miss your leadership, your mentorship, your friendship, and your stories. We wish you the best as you enjoy all of your free time to continue to make those awesome breakfasts for your grandchildren, and not be rushed to have to get to an early morning meeting. And John, I know that you are, know that you are always welcome to come and visit us in our office, but in your own words, if you need us, we will call you. Thank you for your dedication and hard work to the city, and I know there are a number of departments that actually have left you some gifts over there, so I know ECD, Parks, and Public Works, and there's something there from the Controller's Office as well. So thank you for your dedication, we will definitely miss you in our office.
Thank you. So I think, if I'm correct on this, Cheryl may have served with you the longest on your tenure on the Board of Finance, so there are some other people that would like to make some comments, so I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl Tebow next, and I think she has props, too.
I always bring props, yeah. No, I just don't want to wreck it. You know, on this, I kind of use the royal "we," I think, but I made a little card for you, so I guess I have to talk in the microphone. Is that on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, it's my first Dear John letter I ever wrote. Just going to tell you that, I was, I started with that, and I'm like, oh, that's hard. You've reached that ultimate payday, and we would be airheads if we didn't thank you. See the royal "we." You have given good and plenty reasons we look to you to crunch the budget numbers. We are too kind to play tricks on you, so please accept this 100,000 grand, the payday we've all talked about, before it slips through our butter fingers. So please, take five, have mounds of joy from your favorite fiscal nerds. So, I wish you the best, and enjoy. It's been a pleasure serving.
I'm going to continue along, John, if you don't mind, so the years of experience and the dedication that you've given to this city will never, ever be surpassed. You have served since literally 1962, the city, and if my, if our information is right, your first board was in 1969 on the Commission of Human Rights. So John has been serving the city of Bristol since 1969 in unpaid positions, with 20 years on the Board of, 22 years on the Board of Finance, and as Board of Finance Chair since 2019. It's an incredible amount of time and a credible amount of historical knowledge that will never be amassed again, that you personally have, and I know a lot of other people will probably talk about John and all this time that he spent, but what I want to talk about a little bit is John a little more personally. So, John was baptized on January 6 in Lincolnshire, England. He was schooled in reading, writing, arithmetic, and Latin. At the age of 13, John left home and became a sailor. Sorry about that. That's another John Smith. That's the John Smith that founded Jamestown, saved Jamestown, and was the first permanent English settlement, and he was the first president of Jamestown. I kind of started a ChatGPT thing and started pulling up, and that's what came, but I don't think it's that cracked up to what that should be. But a man with such a common name, whose accomplishments are not at all common, fits John, our John, from the city of Bristol, just like John Smith does for the city of Jamestown. My experiences have grown since 2015 on the Board of Ed, where I first really met John, and I've seen John for many years here, and I've been peripherally involved with politics, but as an elected member on the Board of Ed, I was really not surprised, but pleased to see the level of engagement that John had. He was at every important BOE meeting, never missed a budget hearing, took his job so seriously. As a relatively new mayor, and, you know, only having a year and a half in, I can honestly say that John has been a true savior for me as a new mayor, because I haven't had one worry at all about the Board of Finance, so I just can't say enough words about what you have been able to do. The other thing, I think Diane touched on it a little bit, that is really amazing to me, so you were not born in 1608 as John Smith, but you've been around for a little bit, and what's really interesting about you, and again, this is a little bit prejudiced, and I apologize, but for somebody that has been around all these years, I am amazed by your innovative, progressive spirit, your ability to go ahead and listen to ideas and be a problem solver. You are as level-headed as anybody I've met, and you've worked gracefully in every type of political situation with people from Frank Longo, all the way to Mark Woodford, who is on our Zoom meeting now, and dealing with all kinds of people in between, a political party has never mattered, and you've never let anything get to you, so there is no words to express my thanks for your service. I extend gratitude from the city of Bristol, and thank you, thank you, God bless you, John Smith. So, we don't have anything else scripted past that, the first three were the only ones who talked, but if anybody would like to make some comments to John, you're more than open. Jackie.
Thank you. Well, I don't know 100% for sure, but I think I've known Mr. Smith here longer than anyone in this room, and I get to call him John now, but I've known Mr. Smith as an English teacher at Bristol Central High School, and I have a question for you. A good friend of mine told me once that, you being their English teacher, she was so fidgety in class, you tied her to the chair. True or false?
Don't admit that in public.
He pleads the fifth.
Was fidgety? No.
I didn't think so, but I want to thank you for your years of service, and it's always been a pleasure to know you.
Thank you, Jackie.
I'm not a native to Bristol, and have never actually worked for a Bristol business or an employer, I have done a significant amount of volunteering, but it was a brief hiatus from employment that I discovered my phone was just ringing off the hook, and who was at the other end? John Smith, asking if I'd like to be considered to volunteer for one of the institutions in the city. And John, that's what started me on a real love for this city, watching you not only tap me on the shoulder, but a number of other folks in town, in our city, to provide the kind of citizens' interest and involvement and engagement that we, that we, we need, especially for our young people. I think one of the things I've noticed about you over the years is, you are so youthful because you surround yourself with children, teenagers, a lot of young people, and I've really admired that about you, and thank you for helping me stay young by staying involved in issues that concern them. We're going to miss you, I'm going to miss you particularly, but I expect I'm seeing you, you know, in the neighborhoods, in the coffee shops, and, and around. Plus, I know where you live, you live right above Southside School, so I know you're going to keep your eye on that HVAC project, right? But thank you, John, thanks for making my time on the Board of Finance just so enjoyable. Thank you.
Just to add to your comment about a Southside school, so, looking at the list, by the way, there is not a school that exists in the city of Bristol that John wasn't either on the original building committee or a renovation project, so there's literally not a school, I went through and looked at this, from 1972 all the way to 2022, when he worked on the Chippens Hill HVAC project, there would not be a school in the city of Bristol that he hasn't touched. So, we are going to miss that, John, and it is an amazing legacy that you have created for this city.
He was also on the board for the new Northeast school that we just voted on.
Exactly.
The other day.
So, from Southside all the way up, I see, yes, I know that Dr. Moreau, if you'd like to get up and say a few words, you could, this is part of our opening ceremony now of city council meetings, so we knew this was going to run over, so, and we appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a stand-in tonight, it's graduation, and so Dr. Carbone asked if I could come and bring some remarks. Now, I've known John for 32 years, I believe. We first met, actually, because we were on the board at the Environmental Learning Centers together, and then I found out about all your other volunteer work, trying to grow a better Bristol, which was a lot of fun, I still have the apron, and various convenings of the people in town who make things happen, to try to always make Bristol a better place, including the Board of Education, the education the children in this town have received, and it has been my privilege to work with you for 32 years, and very closely on those two K8s that we worked on for 18 months, and no one believed we could build those schools, but we did, and they're fabulous, and so are all the other buildings where your name is listed on the plaque somewhere in that building, as you've just said, for all of these years. So, thank you so much, John, you've done so much for this town and so much for the children of Bristol.
I don't see anybody else clamoring for the microphone. John, you certainly will be the one to close this meeting, so you can have your motion to adjourn when you're ready, but if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you.
Never been known to be speechless, but it's the first time, I guess. Just a comment about, I did do things when I was a teacher which were a bit different. I happen to be a chalk thrower. If you ask John Leoni about that, he can attest to it, he got to be a pretty fair guy in ducking, but I never did tie anybody to a chair, I did threaten to wire a student's jaw shut. And when I got home that night, her father called me and asked me, "Did I do that?", and I said, "Yes, I did," and he said, "Let me know when, or I will help you." Parents don't do that anymore, I guess, but I'm sure he would have helped me. It's, it, this, this is the end of a whole host of things, I guess, today, that it started off with me making the last breakfast for my granddaughter, who now leaves Southside School to go to Chippens Hill Middle School, but all of my grandchildren have come for breakfast while they were in school in Bristol, and it, we have a menu, so anybody, we don't publish it, but if you're around. but if you're around at 7:00 in the morning and want waffles, or pancake, or eggs, or whatever, just let us know, and we'll make it. Not limited parking, but now that summer's around, you can park at the school down on the corner. But that was the first, and taking my last photo with her as she trotted off to end her career at Southside, that was a bit taken aback. Now, this, it's hard for me to relate to the kinds of things that have happened in Bristol that I have been fortunate to have been a part of, whether it was building schools, or helped found the Main Street Community Foundation, or being the president of Boys and Gr- whatever. The people that I have had the opportunity to associate with are simply outstanding. I don't know a whole host of things about folks in other communities, but I do know that Bristol is a very, very special place. And there are certain things that happen here that don't happen in other communities. The Board of Finance is really an apolitical body. It doesn't deal with political affiliations. It deals with what is best for this city. And I can only remember back when, you talked about Frank Longo, even Frank Longo, in all of his bombastic behavior, appointed what he considered outstanding people to this board, not because they might support something he wanted to do, but because even he felt it was the best for the city of Bristol. The same was true with the Board of Education back when the board was appointed. Frank Longo happened to appoint the wife of the person he defeated to become mayor to the Board of Education, and Carolyn Norton was an extremely outstanding Board of Education member. Bristol, I could go on and on, but I won't, because there are more important things to do. I threatened to write some of these things down and try to get someone to publish it. But all I can say is that the people I have been fortunate to have worked with, who have helped me do, get some things done that perhaps would not have been done, I can only thank all of them from the bottom of my heart. And unfortunately, some of them are no longer with us, starting with Russ Gallopp, who was the controller when I first started at the Board of Ed. We did things that you weren't supposed to do. Well, how can we do that? Because we just did it. And I'm not sure what else I can say, other than thank you, and thank you because I think this city, and I would hope someone devises a way, and I have a plan about that. I'd like to talk with you, Mr. Mayor, about letting other people in other communities know what fantastic department heads, workers, public, we have in this community, bar none. Just amazing statistics when you consider that, for example, in ours, the police department, over 60% of the people have bachelor's degrees. It's an astounding number, if you look at other communities. The other side of that is, the fire chief gave me a fire hat, and I don't know how in heaven's name people wear that hat and everything else they have, because I can just barely pick it up. It's heavy. But thank you for allowing me to do what I really loved to do. I appreciate this in ways that you'll never understand. And all I can say is go forth and keep doing the good works, because the people in this community deserve it. And at some point, there will be folks around this state that say, maybe we should do it the way Bristol does it. Maybe we should do it the way Bristol does it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. John, if you could, motion to adjourn, so we can enjoy some cake, and you can open some presents.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is 7:32. As I told you, we're skipping closing ceremonies, not too heavy in our agenda, so we should stay on time and do all right here. I'm going to call the City Council meeting for June 13 to order at 7:32, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Number two on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from the City Council meeting on May 9, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, changes, additions, subtractions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I don't have to pause anymore, because we're all here live tonight, which is good. Number three is public participation. I know the sign was moved. I didn't see anybody a minute ago. Eric, anybody sign up for public participation? Nope. I will throw it out there, because it wasn't in its normal place. Does anybody wish to address the City Council under public participation live here? And how about on Zoom? We have three participants on Zoom. Anybody on Zoom? Nope. Okay, so we will move forward. And I do see that we have our presenters here. Do we have somebody?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That was from previous meeting, I think. All right, we're good. So number four is a presentation by the representatives from the Daughters of American Revolution, and we will entertain a motion after we have that presentation. So this was a held-over item from our last City Council meeting. Glad you can join us and attend tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Cagiano and the City Council members. My name is Deborah Dupree Norris, and I am the Regent of the Catherine Gaylord Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. The purpose of my attendance is to request approval for the installation of a commemorative marker on the property or watershed land known as Torrey's Den. The marker would be installed during the America 250th Celebration and would be of no cost to the city of Bristol.
Great. And I saw there was an awful lot of material included. I think we read through it last time. I think, honestly, we probably were going to approve it last time, but we really wanted you to be here. So I don't think anybody has any questions on this or comments? No?
I would entertain them, because I do have information, sign size and color, and did my, I did my research.
Yes. And I appreciate, too, because the packet has a ton of information in it as well, too. I can maybe speak for myself, not the council, but you'll hear a vote in a second, that this is definitely a great thing to add to the city. Love everything that you do, and it's a great historical marker for us. So we do appreciate you coming here live. Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair.
Well, do Cheryl?
I did enjoy reading the history that you provided. I found that really fascinating, and thank you for sharing that.
Oh, thank you very much.
Through the chair. Eric?
Do you have a picture or markup of something of how that sign looks?
Yes. The sign will be in this shape, and I'll take this to you. And I learned today that the white is now gold. And this is, and I have the measurements. The marker is 18 inches by 32 inches, cast iron with a seven-foot aluminum pole. The grant that we're asking for from National Society is called the William E. Pomroy Grant, who will be absorbing the cost. It takes six months for the grant to be reviewed, and a year for that particular marker to be forged.
I think it looks very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like this back?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Through the chair, since you did so much preparation for this. Where exactly at Torrey's Den is this sign going to be?
That, right now, to be honest, is up for debate. The first thought is that it would be off East Plymouth. There's a parking area. One of my contemporaries, Lee McFadden, is looking for an Eagle Scout to clean that parking area, bring in gravel. I have spoken to Mr. Robert Longo of the Water Department, and he fears destruction of not only the sign, but of the parking area. So the other would be closer to Torrey's Den itself, which would be a hike-in to see it. The grant itself likes it in a more public place. So it's, I would have to work with, I believe, Robert, with the Water Department, since...
Correct, yep. And Jackie will be our liaison there, so.
And out of courtesy, we would have to as well approach Burlington, because we've been looking at maps, and it appears that it's, could be on their property as well.
Oh.
So.
Makes sense. Great.
The only thing I would add is, we have a very active Boy Scout troop, number 425. They've produced many Eagle Scouts, and I'm sure if you reach out to their leaders, and I can probably get you a couple of their names, they might have somebody who's looking for a project.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a couple of them. Good. Anything else from the council? All right, we're going to vote now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you for the great work.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming here live. All right. Number five is announcements, and I will start on my far left. We'll start with you, Susan.
I don't have any this month.
Oh, okay. Sebastian, any announcements?
Just one brief announcement, Mr. Mayor. The Friends of the Bristol Public Library will hold a used book sale in the lobby of the main library and of the Van Ross Library from June 14, which is tomorrow, to June 27. Books can be purchased wherever the libraries, whenever the libraries are open, and new items will be added throughout the sale, and it's a cash-only sale. Proceeds help fund activities and special programs for children's and teens in the libraries, at both libraries. Thank you.
Thanks, Sebastian. Jackie, any announcements?
I do not have any, Mayor. Thank you.
Eric?
Yep, I have two. The Carousel Museum will host the Juneteenth Celebration on Monday the 19th from 4 to 8. For more information and to RSVP, visit thecariselmuseum.org/juneteenth. Also, the Farmer's Market will return this Sunday, June 17, at 10:00 a.m. in Center Square downtown. I hope to see you all there.
Thanks, Eric. Andrew, no comments or no announcements? Cheryl, announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor and I had the opportunity to attend the salute dinner last month, in which 14 area high school seniors were recognized as they, after graduation, will be attending several, any of the branches of the armed services. And so could you indulge me while I read these 14 names?
No, go ahead.
Because I'm so proud of these youth. All are from Bristol, except for two. One was from Plainville, one was from Burlington. So going, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce a name. Going into the Army, we have Anthony Burns, Jaden Figueroa Birch, Evan Gleifert, Nicholas Zalowinski, and Frederick Joynter. Going into the Navy, we have Mateo Kanu, Ava Beach, and Bryant Kowalski. Going into the National Guard is Haley Paige Bryant. Into the Air Force, we have Jomar Frias, Ann Alyssa Bernard, Ian Henry. And into the Marine Corps, Gabriella Williger and Jack Sodier. Some of them are graduating tonight, and some of them are heading for basic camp, boot camp, in like two weeks. So please keep these youth in your thoughts. And just one other group of youth I'd like to highlight is, we're fortunate that we have several young ladies that will be representing Bristol. They're either from Bristol or representing Bristol in the Miss Connecticut Teen Pageant this weekend. We have Maggie Wernicki, who is Miss Nutmeg, Carson Gagny, who's Miss Mum City. We have Emily Anastasio, who is Miss Bristol. We have Olivia Chapdelaine, who's Miss Chrysanthemum. And we have Cameron Patton, who is Miss Forestville. So we're fortunate that we have all these young ladies willing to be ambassadors for the city, and I wish them luck. And again, with it being graduation for Bristol Central and Bristol Eastern, I salute all our graduates tonight, and I wish for them a happy future.
Thank you, Cheryl. I will just add on that last comment, that it was my pleasure to go ahead and speak briefly at the Bristol Eastern Graduation, where I was a graduate, so first time as a mayor going back to speak at that school, which was very cool. But the other announcement that I did want to make and call people's attention to is Edgewood Grammar School had its last day of school as a grammar school today. I got really involved with that. My three kids graduated from Edgewood School. It was actually pretty an emotional event. They gave me an eagle, because they are the Edgewood Eagles, that we have to get into City Hall. I got a cape, and I high-fived all of those kids today as they left that school. Little bittersweet for a lot of them, because they're going off to another school, but we will be bringing the Beck Center in there. So it was a good day all around. And I'm going to encourage everybody to watch the video of Olivia Quintaro, who is a second grader. So you have to remember that when you watch the video of her description of Edgewood School. It was tremendous. So that was great. The only other quick thing, and I think Andrew's going to talk more about, there's a lot of stuff happening in the parks, but I will concur, that pickleball is a really big dill. We had about 70 seniors show up and play pickleball yesterday. The courts are open, and the reason I bring it up under announcements is, I think, they were locked for a couple days, but those courts are open. We're encouraging people to go to bristelparksandrecreation.com to go ahead and sign up. But the courts are beautiful, they're open. And just for the record, I went 1 and 2 against the three matches that we played already. So I'm already on the losing side, but it's a great game, a lot of fun. Any other announcements that we might have missed? No, many of them had 20 years on me. They did. All right, we're going to move on to number six, which is the Consent Calendar, Items A through G. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the Consent Calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to reports and committee reports. We only have one scheduled. That's the Salary Committee, which is 7A. So you take that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would, I'll first make the motion, then we can have a discussion.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an additional position of Code Enforcement Building Inspector in the Building Department, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Second.
All right. Explain to us a little bit about what's behind this?
Yes, we also have our Code Enforcement Director. Is that your title?
Chief Building Official.
Chief Building Official in the audience, who would be willing to also, if need be, come to the podium. But due to the number of inspections, due to the number of requirements, due to a number of issues, the department has really been struggling to keep pace with the amount of inspections, follow-up, and hearings that they need to be involved in. We took a deep dive...
We took a deep dive into the number of infractions that occurred. We looked at how many had fines, how many of those fines might have been waived, and for what various reasons. And although there is a feeling on the Salary Committee that some fines would help cover and offset the cost of this, the goal is not fining, the goal is compliance, so that our businesses are following the requirements, our homes, and so forth. One thing this will alleviate is, we currently hire a part-time employee in the summer to do the grass, measure the grass and go out and do that. With the addition of this position, it's, we will not have to fill that next summer. They should be able to take on those duties as well. So that is another cost offset. But after listening to the Chief Official, after looking at the number of infractions, we felt this was a needed position.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody on the Salary Committee in particular?
One, do we have a salary? Do we know what the figure is?
We do, and I should have it with me. We have, Mark, do you, if you give me one second, I will tell you.
While we're getting that, I would like to make one comment, and it's to, not to go against anything that you said, Cheryl, but I will say that we are, I'm very proud to see that the Code Enforcement, Blight Control, Tall Grass, we've been moving in a very positive direction with increasing citations, but fines definitely lead to compliance. I know you're looking for compliance, we all are looking for compliance. We actually don't want to take buildings down, we don't want to set ourselves backwards, we want to build downtown, and lots of other things, but fines and citations are very effective in getting people to be compliant. So I believe this position can add to the ability for us to be very consistent with that, and not just cite somebody on the first occurrence and then catch up with them a month or two later and find out they haven't complied. We'd want to do this on a more regular basis, so I'm sure that that was part of the conversation as well. Did you find it, Cheryl? I can't dance much longer. I can't sing, and I can't dance.
I'm working it.
We could do...
Through the Mayor, through the Mayor, just to kind of expand on what you were saying too. Our Chief Building Official spends at least 75% of his time on Code Enforcement. So I think that this position is going to be really valuable to continue the smooth process that we have rolling right now with Code Enforcement, but it's also going to allow him to do, you know, the main part of his job that he should be doing. So I think that's also a point to be shared, because he is our Chief Building Official, and he is spending more than 75% of his time doing Code Enforcement.
Yep.
He needs to be doing other things as well.
Great. So, you know, I think overall, without the summer position, and with hopefully increased fines that will lead to compliance, we might not see a huge increase in the total salary. That was the goal, I know, then when Rick approached me to go ahead and talk about this. Did you get the final number?
I do not.
All right.
It does fall in line in the schedule, you know, step position and so forth. But again, that was one of our hopes, that the combination of fines, the combination of the summer will, Olivia, you know, cause no influx on the budget, no impact, so.
That's so.
Sebastian, I will get you that rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
And also, another little piece too, was that we have spent an amount of money for a Tall Grass guy previously, and once this is up in effect, that's going to absorb into it as well. So there's a little piece of that too.
Yep.
Through the Chair. So the discussions that we've had, we're trying to get compliance. We feel that this position will increase that percentage of compliant properties.
Yes, and what will help with the fines, one thing to remember is, everything has to follow the adequate number of days that a person's given in order to comply before you can start doing fines. This will allow the Chief Building Officer to be able to oversee all that and make sure all those pieces are happening as well, and be able to put a little bit more behind the hearings when they go, if somebody should appeal. Anybody who's assessed a fine has an opportunity to appeal. However, if we have a good, solid case where they haven't been complying, we'll be more successful to both collect and have compliance.
And I can just speak from the Code Enforcement meetings that we have once a month, first Wednesday of the month, so I encourage people to pay attention to that. We have more complaints coming in than Rick and his department can probably handle at this point. I do believe that over time, those will diminish, but right now, the need is pretty high to have more people inspecting, staying on top of it, and moving people forward. So I think it'll take time for people to realize that we're really serious about this, and I think this position is warranted for that reason. Other questions or comments? I'm going to ask for a vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? All right, motion carries. Make sure I'm in the right spot here. Number eight is old business. I'm not aware of any old business. Anybody have any old business?
Were there other reports?
Oh, I did, I did skip over committee reports, we're trying to move too quick. I'll start with you then, so, sorry, committee reports.
Just real brief, the Arts and, City Arts and Culture just held our first Cultural District Day last Saturday. We call it a big success. We had a lot of people come out. A lot of the businesses in the area displayed the new logo, and hopefully, they had some foot traffic. We looked for this to be an annual event. We're excited that Arianna Ontario has joined us in the position of the Theater Manager, and I'm not quite sure her full title, but some great ideas for Rockwell Theater are coming forth, including, we're working to, on a program to bring volunteers in to help usher shows and help with the parking, so people can look for that. Public Works meets this Thursday, for all those interested. One of the things that we're looking at are the transfer station fees, and that will be on our agenda. City Hall is on schedule, and we anticipate to have a council meeting in October in council chambers, which would be really sweet. Just lastly, Transportation did not meet, but I do want to talk about a couple bills that did go through the legislature, that we will be talking about over the next year. One is a task force on illegal traffic activity. As you know, street takeovers have been occurring, and so this task force will be active in that. It's not necessarily transportation, it's kind of with police, but I'm glad to see that that passed. In addition, there was a recommendation from Vision, from the Zero Vision Group on red light cameras, however, it's my understanding, Nagatech Valley, who does represent us, will be preparing items for public engagement on this. So nothing, real quick, but I did want to share those items.
Thank you. Eric, I'll go down. You'll be next. Anything to report?
I have nothing to report.
Great. Jackie?
No reports, thank you.
Sebastian?
Nothing to report.
Susan?
This is the first time in many months that I don't have a whole bunch of things to read. Just a quick update on our Ordinance Committee. We are, right now, in the trenches, going over our new littering ordinance, and I encourage everyone to, you know, to read the minutes from the last meeting, and possibly even attend our next ordinance meeting, which is the first Tuesday of every month at 5:00 above the Police Department. There's, there's a lot of things with this ordinance on littering that we're trying to, you know, make sure that we cover. We also are trying to make it relevant. We don't want to just put an ordinance out there of a whole bunch of rules that can't possibly be enforced. So we've been having a lot of discussion about trying to make it where it's really effective for our community. The whole goal, again, just like the compliance discussion, we just want to make sure that people are taking pride and respect our community. The littering, the NIPS, the tag sale signs on utility poles that are left up for a month, all of this just kind of contributes to a bad image for the city of Bristol. And as a community, we deserve much better than that. So I do encourage everyone to come out to our next ordinance meeting. As far as code goes, I don't have any numbers as far as citations for this past month, but I have been advised that the, I know Public Works is, is up there with citations, with some of our carriage retrieval program, but with code, what we've been working on, and we're going to continue working on this short-term, is we're kind of doing a complete review of the whole entire Code Enforcement program. And this kind of started with the request of a Code Enforcement Officer, a new position. Just this past week, we met with Public Works, we kind of, you know, so that we could better understand what their process is. There's a lot of fine-tuning going on, improving efficiency. The biggest component, I think, is sharing of information. It seems like all the different departments are doing a really good job. You know, there's a lot of need to share information, and that's kind of being worked on right now. Corporation Council's been working on tweaking warning letters, just to make sure that, you know, our residents, if they are issued a warning letter, you know, it's very clear on what their, their due process is. So right now, we're kind of, you know, making, taking a program that's been doing pretty well, and we're, we're kind of taking it to the next level. So that's what we've been working on the last month as far as code.
Thank you. And I'm going to dance for another two or three seconds.
I got one.
Oh, good, you can help me then. Go ahead, Eric, and then we're going to call Andrew.
Board of Education, past meeting, voted for next year to get rid of gate fees collected at the school for sporting events on BOP, Board of Education properties. This includes, only includes Board of Education properties, not Muzzy or other city properties. By doing this, the Board feels it makes these sporting events more inclusive and will allow more students to attend.
Great, thank you. All right, Andrew, you're up for any...
First, let me apologize, I have a son in Poland, in the military, so that's why he took off. He doesn't call his father as much as he should. I will start with the Early Childhood Alliance, that if all children who are fully registered for kindergarten are going to be entered in their drawing to ride, to first ain kindergarten, is he here?
Oh, no, he left.
On the fire truck. I thought he was still here, too bad. Police Chief Gould will be drawing the name, will be filmed live at 11:00 on Making Bristol Better Facebook page. Also, we have, from the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance, and School Readiness Council are planning a Family Fun Day this Saturday, June 17th, from 11:00 to 3:00 o'clock at Eastern High School. It's free for all families, still have a touch-a-truck, a helicopter landing, many local vendors, fun activities for children, food trucks, and more. So if you're free and available, come on, stop down. They'd love to have as many as they can there.
Great. Anything else? You want to talk about parks a little?
Yeah. We had the opening after, well, the Vets had a very successful Memorial Day, 209 was on Sunday, and we had a couple of guest announcers with the Mayor and the Deputy Mayor. And then Host Two was on Monday. Everything was very successful. We were able to dedicate the new bridge. We dedicated the new bench that's made to rest, it's the only resting bench in Point and Boulevard. It was paid for with the final money from Team Bristol. We unveiled the urban garden after all of that on Sunday. It used to be where the dilapidated old tennis courts were. And speaking of tennis courts, we were able to prison the Wilson Park Basketball Court yesterday. Myself, Councilman Olson, and the Mayor were there, to a nice crowd. Let me stop. Before we got there, it's a brand-new court, nobody's ever laid on it, there was graffiti. Brand-new court, hasn't even been touched, and it was graffiti. So that's too bad, that really kind of disappoints me. But the guys at the parking rec and Public Works got rid of it, gone. So if you're out, by all means, come on out and try the courts. It's a great local pocket park, great neighborhood, very, very happy to see the new court. Then we went over to the pickleball court, to, when I pulled in, what do you think, 80 people? Ever take? All in their white shirts that said, want to tell them, Mr. Mayor?
Pickleball is a big, really big dill.
Parking, way on the streets. Yeah, it was packed, and as soon as the Mayor cut the ribbon, they filled up. Every single court, you have people waiting for courts to sign up. So this should be a great thing for the community. You can receive, reserve the courts by calling the Bristol Rec Department, and that's the easiest way to get them, so that you know you're guaranteed a spot. It's also on a website, bristolrec.com, it's bristolparkandrec.com. And that's it for me.
Great.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is that the only field that requires a reservation?
Yes, you're not required, but it just gets you in easier to have a court. We will be labeling, labeling the court numbers, so that if somebody calls, I have a 10:00 on Court Two.
Okay, thank you.
Six courts right now, too. The, the pickleball kind of group, they have an association, they may kind of take it over at times, and they have their own little reservation system that they do within. It went very smoothly, actually, with all those people there, so...
Yeah, it really did.
It's good stuff. All righty. I don't think there's any other committee reports. Good. We will move on to number eight, which is old business. I'm not aware of any old business. Does anybody have any old business? I'm not aware of any new business. Does anybody have new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sue, go ahead.
I'll start with the motion, and then we also have Chief Gould in the audience, if there's any questions. I make a motion to authorize the Bristol Police Department to apply and accept, if granted, the fiscal year '23 U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant for the total of $55,080. The local match is $24,540, or 50% of the grant total. This grant program will provide funding for 50% of the cost of 40 new or replacement bulletproof vests, for which the PD anticipates being required to purchase during the upcoming fiscal year.
Great. We have a second from Jackie. Any questions or comments? And Chief Gould, I'll ask you to come up, because I think a question's coming. Go ahead, Andrew.
Through the Chair. I had a cousin who is in Afghanistan. You know who I'm talking about, I would assume. Those retired bulletproof vests saved his life.
Yep. Yeah, we, we are privileged to be able to donate when we can over there.
And will they be these ones that are being retired?
Yeah, if they, if we take them, and if we have a calling for them, we will absolutely provide them, 100%.
Excellent. Go ahead, Jackie.
Chief Gould, don't run off. So we have some now, correct? Do they have the bulletproof vests now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so these are better ones?
Nope, they're, they have a five-year lifespan to them.
Oh, okay.
So every five years, we rotate the people that are up on expiration.
Got it, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the whole department isn't being re-vested all in the same year?
No, no, we're on...
It's phased in.
Yes, every year, we have a different cycle going on, correct?
And we have several new officers coming on board, and hopefully, many more in the near future, so, yeah.
Yeah, they get one when they, when they get hired.
Great. All right. No other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, we'll have you read our resignations for this month.
We have Eileen Abrams, Zoning Commission; Kathy Berness, from the Bristol Burlington Health District; Michaela Cervantes, was a Section 2-9 from the Youth Commission; Amy Cutter, was a Section 2-9 from Esser ARP; Jennifer Labriola, was a Section 2-9 from Esser ARP; and Andrew Collins and Gregory Klimic have been removed from the Transportation Commission due to an imbalance with minority representation on the board.
Thank you very much. So we had a couple of resignations, and just to dovetail a little bit on the last one, you know, we're getting much better at making sure that when we make these appointments that we have minority representation. I've talked with all of them, they understand that, but certainly, we're going to have to fill many of those positions moving forward. June is a busy month, July falls off a little bit, but now with some of these resignations, I'm encouraging everybody out in the audience and all of our council members to continue to recruit. We, we never have enough people that want to serve. It'll be my second chance tonight to talk about John Smith. It's not often that you have somebody that serves from 1969 on, so we're always looking for people, so...
Through the Chair. Motion to place on file and have a letter of thank you sent to each participant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, we will move on to those appointments that I talked about. First, from the Commission with Disabilities. This month, we had a couple turned over, so all of these are going to be reappointed. So we are going to reappoint Tracy Dragon Bee Land to a term that expires in 6/26. We're going to reappoint Gloria Ewing to a term that expires in 6/26. And... We're gonna reappoint Gloria Ewing to a term that expires in 6/26, and we are gonna, let's stop there, because we'll take those two, the next one is a replace. So can I have a motion to reappoint those two?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Alright, third one, I lied, was to replace Greg Klimick with Andrew Collins, and a term that expires on 6/26.
So moved.
Second.
There we go. You got it, Erica? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Are we gonna move on to zoning? So on zoning, we have a reappoint, so I wanna entertain a motion to reappoint Thomas Mara to a term that's gonna expire in 6/26.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And this is where it gets a little bit complicated, but I think we have this right here. So we need to replace Louise Provenzano, who happened to be the chair, her term, she's stepping down as well, her term expires on 6/23, and this term will go until 6/26. So we are gonna appoint Richard Goodwin, who was an alternate to her position, so that he moves up to be a regular on the zoning board. So I need a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Now that Rich is not an alternate anymore, we are looking to appoint John Lefreniere as an alternate member to replace Richard Goodwin, and that term will also expire in 6/26.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And finally, we are going to replace Eileen Abrams, who just resigned, so that's one we, we knew about coming into this meeting, as an alternate, alternate member with Michael DeRoein to a term that expires in 12/25.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Good. So zoning got filled up pretty quickly, I just will throw a plug out there, many of other, many of our other land use boards are in need of at least an alternate, and so we definitely need people that wanna serve on the other land use boards. Under Fair Rent Commission, they will actually have their, their first meeting in a, what do we call that? Sorry. Give me the name.
Organizational.
Starting meeting? What is it called?
Organizational.
Organizational meeting, that's, just wasn't coming to me, that. They'll have that tomorrow night. The commission is filled, but we had two alternate positions that we need to appoint, and we can do these together, because they're both appointments. I'd like a motion to appoint Mary Alfred as an alternate, alternate member. She's representing tenants with, and her term will expire on 5/24, and then we're gonna appoint Ryan Carrier as an alternate member. He's gonna be representing landlords, and his term will expire on 5/20/25.
So moved.
I give that one to Cheryl, I heard her first.
Second.
Give a second to Susan. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Erica, last thing that I just wanna, I'll make sure I didn't ask you about the vital statistics, which are our last, second to last ones. Do those need votes, or are they just appointments? So we're gonna take a motion to update our vital statistics sub registrars. Ronald F. Duhane and Chris Duhane from Funk Funeral Home, they will be a retroactive appointment from 1/2023, and their term will expire in November of 2026. Also, Eric Granados from O'Brien Funeral Home will have a retroactive appointment that goes back to 1/2023, and that term will also expire in November of 2026. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation about this one? I know there was a question that came to me aside, and if I have this right, Erica, in the case of death certificates, if you're not available, these would be the secondary options to go ahead and issue an emergency death certificate.
That is correct. If town, if City Hall is closed.
Or if City Hall's closed, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And I actually saved the Board of Finance for last, I don't see John Mace here, but first, we'll take a motion to reappoint Jonathan Mace to a term that expires on 6/27.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And certainly not last, and not least, but we would entertain a motion to replace John Smith with Mark Peterson, and a term that expires on 6/27.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It's a tough, tough shoes to fill for Mark Peterson, but Mark is actually somebody who served on the Board of Finance before, he's currently on ARPA, which is starting to wind down a little bit, so a very good replacement. Nobody replaced John Smith, obviously, after tonight. Alright, we will move on to item number 12, which is the consideration and approval of a request by the Connecticut Department of Transportation for a permanent easement of 480 square feet along the northerly border of Memorial Boulevard at East Street, and a 984 square feet temporary construction easement along the northerly border of Memorial Boulevard at East Street to facilitate bridge reconstruction over the Poughkeepsie River.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Go ahead, Erica.
Will this interrupt any businesses in the area?
Uh, no, I don't think there are any businesses, actually, I think that's right along 234 Riverside, which is the old Dodge Village, which isn't operating currently.
There's sort of a motive there at-
On the other side, but they'll all have access on Riverside, I believe, so I don't-
Parking and everything.
I don't know, we can, right, where they are.
Yep, I don't think we'll have any issues with that. Ray, are we correct in the answer on that? He's giving me the thumbs up. Good question. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number 13 is a resolution regarding the Edgewood School Targeted Alterations Project at Edgewood School. This is a resolution that we will do a roll call vote on, but I think, can we waive the reading of the resolution on this?
We can waive the reading.
I make a motion to waive the reading of the Edgewood School Resolution.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Alright, we'll do a roll call vote. Go ahead, Erica.
Mayor?
Yes. I liked that you started with me.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Resolution is moved.
Passed, thank you. We will move on to number 14 and 15, which are kind of related, they're similar, but the resolution regarding the Bristol Central High School Culinary Arts Program Alteration at Bristol Central High School, we'll-
Through, through the chair, I would like to make a motion to waive the reading of both the BCHS Culinary Arts Resolution and the BEHS Culinary Art Resolution.
Great, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Now we'll do a motion, we'll approve these one by one, because of the roll call vote. We'd need a motion for that.
Motion to approve the Bristol Central High School Culinary Arts Program Alteration at Bristol Central High School, 480 Wocot Street.
Second.
Alright, go ahead, do the roll call, Erica.
Okay, let's start with you again, Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, and-
Through the chair, I'd like to forward a motion to approve Bristol Eastern High School Culinary Arts Program Alteration at Bristol Eastern High School, 632 King Street. Second.
Sebastian gets that one. Roll call vote.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Okay, resolution carries.
Thank you very much. Alright, number 16, to award the contract 2P 23-051B, construction manager at risk for construction of the new Northeast Middle School to Demato Downs joint venture in the amount of $4,727,863. Can I have a-
Move approval.
Second.
Great. Ray, I know you're here too, but I don't think we have anybody from, oh, we have Roger, if we have questions on that. So this was, by the way, something that Maria had asked about in the Joint Board. The funding for this has been approved by the state, somewhere in the 50, high 50% range, so the, the school funding by the state is there, we will have our own on this, and the awarding of the contract was to Demato and Downs. So, questions from the group? Comments? Anything I'm missing, Roger? This one's pretty straightforward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. 17, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign and execute any and all documents related to the Dillinger Expanded Youth Service Bureau Data Sharing Agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And I am just double checking, but I think that's all of our regular meeting items, we're gonna move into our executive session. If I am correct, we are going to, who, who's gonna come in for the first one on 18, just?
Outside Council, Nicole Fleckinger in our office.
Okay, so Nicole Fleckinger, as well as corporate counsel and us, and then for 19, 20, and 21, that'll be Mark-
Personnel Director, Mark Penny in our office.
Yep. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll be in executive session. Alright, for the record, no votes were taken in executive session, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Sebastian has a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?